Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the March 26th meeting of the Norwalk Council. If you please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, if you please call the role.
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Nadolski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith, here. Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins. Ms. Young, here. Ms. McMur. Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
I think he answered. He was going to be on Zoom.
And Ms. McMur.
So we have fourteen. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Did you guys hear me?
Yes. Yep, we counted you as in. First item on the agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 12, 2024. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan has made the motion. Any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Ms. Murray.
Yes, on page four, it starts out with Ms. Nadolski-Eichner spoke in support of the appointment. Actually, I spoke in support of that appointment again Wednesday and followed by Jen McMur said in support of this appointment. And then I also have a correction on page 11. The paragraph that starts with Ms. Smith, the third sentence says Ms. McMur said she heard rave reviews about how response to the team is, and actually I said that, that should say Ms. McMur.
Thank you. Any further corrections, deletions, or omissions? Ms. Dunn.
On page three, it says that I spoke in opposition to Ms. Formanek. I would also like to have included that it is due to concerns of misrepresentation on her website and resume as to her background.
Anything further? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as corrected? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public participation. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and speak on an item that is on the agenda.
Ms. Lisa Brinton.
Lisa Brinton, 19 Shorefront Park. In reviewing tonight's agenda, I saw that we're hiring a new CFO, and I have a couple of comments to Mr. Schmidt regarding your background and a warning to you about accepting a position as Norwalk CFO. Your strengths are your past three years in the city of Fairfield after your predecessor was fired, the toxic-filled dumping scandal, your audit of employee credit card expenses, and your expansion of grant writing. However, the bulk of your experience was in Hartford as a policy analyst versus traditional CPA accountancy track. Perhaps your combined experiences will act as a check and balance on Norwalk's policies and our spending habits because we're in financial trouble. To supporters, I'm the canary in the coal mine. To detractors, I'm a naysayer. But as a 26-year resident and chair of the Independent Party, I have the luxury of speaking candidly and not having to comply with party narratives. The financial challenges you'll face, Mr. Schmidt, won't necessarily play out in public. Being governed exclusively by one party means most, almost exclusively by one party, means most discussions happen behind closed caucus doors. With your experience in Hartford, you'll appreciate the governor's plan to double the size of Connecticut cities. Unfortunately, Norwalk taxpayers are drinking out of a fire hose right now because of increased people, poverty, and expenses. Our city boasts third- and fourth-generation families who face moving out due to property taxes. Is it simply market forces, or could we manage the city better? I'd say it's a bit of both. Regardless, we now have big-city problems without big tax revenues. It's been said that without the $333 million in apartment revenue, things would be worse. But then even if all were taxed at the full rate excluding the tax abatement schedule, they'd only generate $5 million revenue, and that's five days of funding our schools. We can't keep up with BOE spending. We can't keep up with tax abatements. We can't keep up with lawsuits, and we can't keep up with lost businesses. Meanwhile, staff claim no bandwidth to implement neighborhood parking permits for overcrowded streets or 200 backlog blight and zoning violations. Both initiatives would produce revenue. The last census recorded a population of about 91,000 individual per capita income of 57 and household income of about 97,000. Our poverty is at 10.9. Our foreign-born at 29.9. We've got about 2,000 veterans, about 15% retirees and 19% under 18. We now face, or homeowners now face, a 10% to 37% increase in their tax bill or future rent increases. Our biggest expense is education.
Two minutes, 30 seconds.
New six-figure administration positions to continue to be created while teachers leave our district mid-year and our student test scores are lower than ever. Most residents have no idea of the financial realities and tax bills that lie ahead. So while Mr. Schmidt has been appointed to this administration, you ultimately report to all the residents in Norwalk, and I look forward to seeing how you tackle these challenges, and I offer my support. Thank you very much.
Any further person in the audience wish to address the council? Please come forward and state your name.
Don Stentins, triana from East Norwalk. So here just following up what you just said. We do have a financial problem, and I would like to talk about the school budget and performance.
I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda for this evening, so you can only speak on an item that's on the agenda, or else it's an FOI violation.
Okay, so I didn't see the agenda.
We're going to be having another meeting with the BET, so certainly you can address some concerns with the BET members.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, there's a meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Does anybody else in the audience? Well, you can certainly sit in on it. Is there any other person in the audience that wishes to address council? James, is there anybody online?
For those who joined us by Zoom online, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically. Yeah, we don't have anyone.
That brings me to resignations and appointments. We only have one appointment, and it gives me pleasure to put forward, to appoint, and to put forward for council approval. Mr. Jared Schmidt, who is the candidate for Chief Financial Officer for the City of Norwalk. He brings with him lots of experience. He has over 16 years of public sector financial management experience. Beginning in 2020, he served as Chief Fiscal Officer for the town of Fairfield, where he oversaw and managed a budget of $350 million. He is in his role. He also managed the municipality's annual bond sale and supervised the finance, IT, assessor, tax collector, and purchasing departments. It's pretty much the same organizational structure that we have right here in the city of Norwalk. As CFO, he expanded grant writing opportunities, helping to bring in approximately $12 million to Fairfield and implemented a new capital planning process to help improve transparency and support the implementation of additional capital projects. So I need a motion to put forward for discussion, Ms. Smith and Mr. Burnett. And do we have discussion? We have Mr. Schmidt here. If anybody wishes to ask him any questions, and then we can proceed. Seeing, yes, Mr. Goldstein.
I think that one thing I think it would be nice if you could speak on is obviously, you know, there are certainly a lot of financial challenges in our city and sort of coming in as a, you know, as a CFO, you know, how do you, you know, look at sort of Norwalk's challenges and what are some things you're thinking about doing to, you know, work with your office to try and address them?
Sure. Thanks for that question, and thank you all. Thank you, Mayor, for selecting me for the position, and I appreciate it. It's a true honor and excited about the opportunity to work with you and your team and all of you as well. I haven't stepped foot in the office yet to start the position. But my plan is to, within the first 60 to 90 days, to definitely meet with all the staff that's working for me and get a sense of all the processes that are in place. You get it and really try to determine if there are any controls lacking. And also, that'll also give me a chance to meet with the staff and understand their capabilities, their skills, and how to best utilize them, or if they are currently being used in the best way possible. But I will, you know, one of the first things I'll do is also is to get a better understanding physically of the city. I'm not a resident of the city, but I want to take some time to understand, especially from the standpoint of the capital plan, to understand what the projects are that are in process, that are being proposed. So that as we go through the process of developing, whether it's the capital budget, the operating budget, that I have an understanding of each of the projects, and it's not just a dollar amount next to a building or a dollar amount next to a road. There's some meaning to it for me, so that'll be important to me as well. So that's, that will be a lot of my time in the first, you know, first days and weeks on the job. Thank you. You're welcome.
Further comment or discussion? Oh, Ms. Nadolski-Eichner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I appreciate you taking the time to answer some questions for us. Let me first build on the answer you just gave by asking you a little bit more about your capital planning work in Fairfield. So I know that that's something that you had taken particular interest in in Fairfield. So could you speak a little bit about what you did there? And what sort of, you know, skills and experience you developed in doing so?
Sure, and it was one of the very first things that I did in Fairfield and one of the first things that I'd plan on doing in Norwalk as well, meeting with the municipal financial advisor and taking another look at the cap on borrowing and figuring out if there's room to, you know, how much room there is to do more borrowing. And in Fairfield, what I did was a which had been done previously, but went through and looked at it again to look at the ratio of debt service to the budget. And so I had the financial advisor model that out, given our past debt and whatever is being proposed in the future so that we can keep it to a reasonable level of the budget, keep the debt service to a reasonable level of the budget. You know, Fairfield had different challenges and a different history than Norwalk, and so the goals there from a standpoint of priorities were different, but there had been a lack of investment in infrastructure and on the town side and the WPCA side of things, and so there was more of an emphasis on those types of projects and a little bit less on the Board of Education. Now, you know, I look forward to finding out more about that split in the history in Norwalk. But I also, as part of that, set forth a framework which laid out how much we can borrow in total and then kind of set up allocations or buckets for each one of the three entities and what they can expect to receive. I think in the, I heard and got feedback from the boards, Board of Education, that they were they were happy to have, I don't know, I don't know if they're ever happy enough with the amount, but they were happy to see a number and to see, like, this is, you know, this is what we can expect to have. And it's a capital plan, so it's always, it's going to change from year to year, and so it wasn't, this wasn't meant to be a stringent, okay, you get $10 million this year, it's all you have. It was meant to be a kind of guide and a long-term guide to, as something to keep an eye on throughout the years.
Thank you. That's very helpful, and I am interested in sort of your framework approach there. Can you also speak a little bit to the, what you think your experience in Hartford and the role that you played there in the General Assembly staff contributes to your work as a CFO in a municipality?
Sure. I had experience with a number of areas. In particular, one of the things that I carried with me to Fairfield and that I would bring to Norwalk is the management experience, which is probably the most important thing. I managed a staff of researchers and co-managed a number of three, four, or five attorneys that were in the department. And we managed the workload, the research and legal workload of our staff. It's particularly related to times when bills are being proposed and tracking bills and following them through the process and shepherding bills through the legislative process. Strictly from the financial side, I gained a ton of understanding and really honed my skills in doing analysis. Also reviewing audit reports of departments and finding ways to use those reports as a tool for making suggestions to end legislation, ways to save money, and ways to make the government operate a little more efficient. I also was exposed and learned a lot about bonding, about debt service, their impact on their bond rating that the state receives and that organizations receive generally in government. Had to spend a lot of time, especially during tough budget years, reading through collective bargaining agreements, the state CBAC agreement, which governs all the benefits to all state employees and figuring out, you know, if there are ways to reform and update benefits that might save the state money. We, in addition to that, had experience with pensions and OPEB, kind of related to the collective bargaining issue to the extent of having meetings again during tough budget times with actuaries and understanding the different elements and the different factors that go into developing the ADEC for the state and what the state's contribution is toward pension obligations, either for the normal cost or unfunded liabilities, both in OPEB and pension. I also served on the Board of the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority for about five years, where I served as the chairman of the Finance and Audit Committee, and again, had great exposure to to the auditing process, planning, audit planning, as well as details about audits and, you know, looking, making sure that controls were in place and all, any of the processes.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any further comments, discussion, or questions? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Maine. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Schmidt and have a discussion about his interests in Norwalk and also his background. And personally, I was impressed with the landscape of work and his deliverables in Fairfield, which is also a AAA-rated town. So he clearly understands the complicated formula that is needed to maintain a AAA bond rating. It's not just one variable, but several. And I think that's very important because that's important to know, to maintain that rating. So he comes in with that experience, that knowledge in terms of what we need to do to continue to stay on the right track. I was also impressed with his management style, allowing those that have the expertise to do their job, but when necessary, to step in and get into the details and provide assistance when necessary in order to deliver the right information. So I am supportive of Mr. Schmidt coming on board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmidt, I just have a brief question about something that was brought up in the introduction of you. It stated that in Fairfield, you had worked or had some influence on bringing some grants to that city, and myself and many of my colleagues are really interested in maximizing the amount of grants that can be brought to Norwalk so that we can be able to give more deliverables to our citizens. Can you speak to what process or what did you do in Fairfield and how could you apply that to Norwalk in regards to your work with granting?
Sure. I'm happy to speak about my experience in Fairfield as far as how that would translate in Norwalk. You know, it's something, one of the other things that I want to look at in the first days and weeks and understand what's in place now. I can say that I hired a part-time grant coordinator. This was about a year into my time there, maybe a year and a half into my time there. And had done some preliminary research to, before that person arrived, and she was fantastic, a fantastic coordinator. But had done some preliminary research to identify different grants based on things that the town had received in the past through talking to CCM and, you know, frankly, just reading news stories about grants that are available and coming up with a trough of grant opportunities that were available, that are available to us. And then from there, I kind of let the grant coordinator go with it. We did, you know, when we first started going down the road, because there hadn't been a really centralized effort to seeking grants and doing grant compliance, and so that was, that was one of the things, one of the benefits to hiring this person. And so we started with the capital plan and looking at opportunities for grants for things that were in the five, 10-year capital plan to try to offset any kind of costs that we had anticipated taking on through borrowing. And then went from there. If there were new, sometimes there were new grant opportunities that came up related to developments that were going on in the town. And we, you know, it was smart for us to take advantage of those, even though they may not have been on the capital plan at the time to, you know, add those to the capital plan and take advantage of the funding that was out there. And then the tracking of grants is also an important piece of this, and then throughout the process, I'm sure that Norwalk went through this as well. If there were any federal grants, they came up with in the last year and a half or so, came up with a whole new system for monitoring, tracking, and applying for grants and doing compliance, and so we had to work our way through that. It took quite a bit of time to do that. Was one of those things that you don't, you don't anticipate and you don't plan for, but have to deal with. You know, just simple things like getting the right people with the right passwords and making conversion from an old system to a new system. So I hope that answers your question.
Any further comments, discussion, or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of appointing Mr. Craig Schmidt as the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Norwalk, please signify by raising your hands. And mine, Ms. Ayers, Mr. Wiggins, okay. Looks like we have a unanimous vote. Congratulations.
Thank you all so much. Very excited to work with all of you.
If you'd like to make any comments, now's the time to do it, and we're forever hold your peace.
I'm sure there'll be plenty of opportunity in the future to make those comments, and then again, I appreciate it. Thanks for the confidence.
We look forward to having you on the team. Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you.
Well, that makes my remarks very briefly. Today, Mr. Burnett and some other council, Mr. Sutton and other city officials, we opened up the Yeah, I'm just looking to see, making sure I was right at the right spot on the agenda. I have been known to miss parts of the agenda. So we opened up the customer service center, and it was really a great little place. The efficiency study for the City of Norwalk recommended that we put the customer service area in an area where customers can see it. And we did that today. We kind of renovated their office where it used to be downstairs, but we made it better, bigger. We brought on another person. I am pleased to say that I had some very positive comments out in the public for the people that handle the community service or public service department, customer service department, because they say they're friendly, they help, they give good information. And we're looking forward to having them downstairs in that new area, and they were very pleased, very thrilled that they had a nice little office from which to work. So that was exciting to all of us. Next, I have, on April 27th, we're going to have our Norwalk Earth Day Festival on the Green. It's going to be a family-friendly and free, most importantly, event. Feature live music, food trucks, tree planting, yoga, healing arts, kids' activities, guest speakers, vendors, and more. I know Ms. Shanahan is all excited about it, and I think all of us are.
Please, everybody come. It's going to be a great day.
Yeah, we are excited about it, and, you know, Norwalk, as you all know, that one of our major goals is to make Norwalk the greenest city in the state of Connecticut. Also, to make sure that we take opportunities that are there for making our, taking care of Mother Earth, if that's for lack of a better term, planting trees, taking opportunities with solar, buying electric vehicles, and so forth. Last week, we held our Easter egg hunt at Mill Hill. It had wonderful attendance. It was inside because of the rain. It had to be inside because of the rain, and I want to thank the Norwalk Historical Society for allowing us to have that event. And last but not least, as we know, this coming weekend is the Easter weekend, and for any person who celebrates Easter, I'd like to wish you a very happy, peaceful Easter, surrounded by family and friends. That's all I have. This council president.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we move on to next reports of the Corporation Council? We have for the consent calendar? I'm going to read this next. I'm going to read this. Corporation Council. A Authorization for Discussion Settlement, Lillio versus City of Norwalk, file number noted. 682 Authorization for Discussion Settlement, Smala Sanco versus City of Norwalk. And that is that for this portion of the consent? These are on consent.
Those are the only two?
The only two.
Okay.
So that is for my portion, so we're going to turn it over to Ms. Heather Dunn to read.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
Okay. Number six, Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs. Number one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into contract with Rowayton School PTA for the use of Rowayton School and immediate surrounding grounds for the Rowayton School Carnival 2024. Event to be held Friday, May 3, and Saturday, May 4, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Set up time Sunday, April 28, 2024, at 7:30 a.m. with teardown Monday, May 6, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. Rain day Sunday, May 5, 2024, approximately 700 people. Number two, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into a contract with NICE for the use of Oyster Shell Park and immediate surrounding grounds for their eighth annual NICE festival event to be held on Saturday, July 6, 2024. Set up time Friday, July 5, 2024, at 6:00 a.m. with teardown by Sunday, July 7, 2024, by 9:00 a.m., approximately 500 people. B, Finance and Claims Committee, accept and approve the report of the claim. B, Finance and Claims Committee, accept and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated March twenty twenty-four. Two, for informational purposes only, near narrative on tax collections dated March twenty twenty-four. Three, for information purposes only, monthly tax collectors reports dated February twenty twenty-four. Four, approved, proposed five-year license agreement, O D E E N's, O H G C, L L C for restaurant service at Oak Hills Park. Approve a reduction, number five, approve a reduction in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars from the police communications console account. Account noted for fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty-four for purchasing eight vehicles for the police department. Number six, approve and increase in the amount of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in the police cars and vans replacement account noted to purchase eight new vehicles, six patrol vehicles and two electric vehicles. Oh, Land Use C, Land Use and Building Management Committee. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a sole source agreement with Gabrielli Trucks Sales in Milford. The purchase of a hundred percent electric Ford cargo van for a total not to exceed sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Funds are available in the following accounts, accounts noted.
So we've heard the consent calendar is red. All in favor? I think that is unanimous? Okay.
Thank you very much. So the first item off consent is recreation and parks, uh items seven, eight, three. Ms. Young?
Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to enter into a contract with Triball Championship U S A L L C for the use of Veterans Memorial Park and immediate surrounding grounds for their two roads tribal championship event to be held on Saturday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from ten A M. to six thirty P M. Set up on Friday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five to twelve P M. At twelve P M. Would tear down on Sunday, July twenty, twenty twenty-five by twelve P M. Approximately one thousand people. Someone move that.
You're gonna move it?
I'm gonna.
Okay, Ms. Young moves it for discussion?
So um, I think we have Robert Stowers here and the gentleman from Triball to just kind of go over um and answer some questions or just give us a brief overview of what this will entail. Um, it's a pretty um extensive project. If we pull this off, I think it would be a really great thing for the City of Norwalk, but there are a lot of details that we have to, you know, get through first, but hopefully everything will work out and we'll have Triball here in twenty twenty-five. Um, I think, Mr. Stowers?
Yes. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, of course, tri ball is a relatively new sport. It hasn't been around for uh many years. It's a, it's a oblong uh like football uh um, that uh has uh different rules um and is a, is, it is a co-ed um, um sport where women play along with the men. So it's, it's a, it's it's, it's a more modern uh way of, of bringing the genders together to play together. Um, the, the, the company is bringing this um to Norwalk um, to promote the sport and really to, to uh expose the sport so that um you know, recreation departments and schools and colleges can see the sport so they can enter into, to the sport as well. What, what they found out um, um during their course of, of being with the sport uh is that really to, to really promote the, and get people out, to really have it as an event. Um, to be, have it be festive, to have food, have drinks and that, those kind of things, just to, to, to make it more festive. Their intention is to bring uh twelve um teams here for a tournament. Um, their intention is also to uh provide information about the sport um and to um, to promote the sport through educational um, uh forums and information. They have been in Norwalk before, twenty nineteen, they held a tournament here uh in Vets Park, the same park. Um, prior to that, twenty eighteen, they uh also had a tournament in Stratford. So they're not new to the, to the area or new in terms of bringing the sport here. But um, they just want to expand the um, the presentation of, of, of more. Uh, they also have done clinics with um our high schools, uh with the A Ds in, in uh twenty nineteen. So they've been here and they've um, they really would like to expose this uh sport in the City of Norwalk. And um, uh, become a centerpiece to, to where it launches. Um, one of the reasons why they need to um come before us today, even though the event's next to twenty twenty-five is because uh an event that is, is going to um be festive and, and promote, they're going to need to have sponsors. And so uh this gives them time to, to raise sponsors, not only time to raise sponsors, but time to, to meet some of our conditions. Uh, as we have our, our special events um, uh process, you know, uh, they're going to have to have a transportation plan. They're going to have to have a parking plan. They're going to have to um, uh, you know, get police uh and, and pay for that and have a plan for that. Uh, but they're gonna have to work out logistics with, with parks and recreation. So um, they need time to do this. And so that is why we're coming to you a year earlier. So um, that's, that's what I have. We have um, Jeremiah Schwartz here. Um, who he has brought this event here, as I stated a couple of times before. He's here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two, two questions. One, um, i- is this the date um regardless if the weather is inclement? So is there a rain date or is it, this is the date, rain or shine?
I think we have Mr. here. You can answer that.
Mr. Schwartz, you're on mute. There you go.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, we, we actually chose uh July twenty-sixth as a rain date as well, which we would make a deposit for uh to also book the field for that date as well. Provided that no other events are looking to, to take the field uh on the same conflicting date.
So I didn't hear all that. So there is a rainy day?
Yes, uh, the, the, the pri, the week right after.
Okay. And, and the other question I had is, is there any structural changes to Vets Park in order to conduct this championship or? And, and if there is, um, will uh the organization return Vets Park to its original state after this uh event?
Thank you for your question. Absolutely. Uh, we've worked with, we've hired a cleaning crew. We will do the same exact thing uh for this event, a much larger one at that. And we will have smaller marquee tents and then ten by ten booth tents and aluminum bleachers as far as um any structural type of things and barricades for crowd control and, and security measures. Um, apart from that, it is a very light footprint. It is nothing, not even close to the Oyster Festival. So we'd like to keep it very light, very manageable and very easy to clean afterward.
Thank you.
Any further comments or discussion? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, um, tri ball's new to me. Uh, I'm just learning about it tonight. Um, and I'm curious, um, it, there will be, it's a tournament with ten or twelve teams. Uh, I forget the exact number that was mentioned. Are these local teams and uh will Norwalk be represented as one of those teams?
Thank you for your question. Fantastic question. These are state teams. So our mission is to produce the world's number one professional co-ed sport. So these will be twelve co-ed state teams from Virginia all the way to Vermont and Connecticut will be represented. And directly after this tournament, what we'd like to do is open up a youth academy in Norwalk and then eventually get to more municipal programs, which would include Norwalk and other cities statewide.
Thank you.
I think the council ought to put together a team.
I'm in.
Uh, any further comment, discussion? I'm, I'm sorry. Who has a question? Oh, Ms. Ayers?
I'm in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this was brought to us and um our committee meeting, and I just feel like to go on record to say I did not vote for it in committee, but I did do some of my own personal research and I will be changing my vote to vote for it tonight. So I just want that to be reflected in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion? Ms. Dunn?
Um, I, I just, I had a long conversation with Doug Marquetti, who um I know Jeremiah said that he had spoken with. Um, Doug said he hadn't spoken to him since two thousand eighteen or nineteen by email and he had some concerns. So I would suggest that Robert, Mr. Stowers, do due diligence and, and check in with him. Um, my other concern is that typically we have uh the Norwalk Festival on Washington Street, the first weekend in August. I don't know if they're continuing to do that. Um, but that would be the rain date too. That might be not a great weekend for rain date. So there's that too.
Further comments? Ms. Seed?
I just had a question. I, I mean, I don't know too much about tri ball, but I know Vets Park, like if it rains for a little while after that, it's kind of like a wetland. Um, so I was wondering, is it safe, like for enough for like people to play? Because if it rains like within the week or two weeks, even if it doesn't rain on that day, um, might be a little bit slippery for the players.
Listen, uh, Mr. Stowers, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I will. We, we now have soccer and we have uh lacrosse there at that. So um, our, our crews get out there and they do the best they can to make the place as safe as possible. But we already have leagues out there year round. So uh, we'll, we'll be doing the same here. We'll try and get the uh facility up and going. But if it's one of those really rainy, rainy days, um, then things might change. But hopefully in this uh, the time period, it will be.
I ask one more question. In committee, we talked about the fact that um there was actually no organization. Um, and it looks like it would be entering contract with Triball U S A L L C. Did you get that L L C since we last spoke at the committee level?
This is for me or for Robert?
Yeah, for you.
So we, we do have that L L C. It is an L L C out of Delaware. Now that I've officially moved to Norwalk, uh, especially after the pandemic, um, it's not easy to build a startup in the sports industry when you have the pandemic and a lot of policies that prevented us from operating for quite a while. So as I moved my office, uh, my business address to my parents' home in Weston, um, we will be in the week uh, dependent on approval here, uh, registering a Connecticut uh L L C and getting our sales license. Um, so that's something that we planned to, to have done by the end of the week.
So we're not going to be entering into a contract with them until it's done, right?
Right. You're absolutely right. Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. I want to make sure.
Good question. Further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Dunn abstains and other than that, it's unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I look forward to working with everyone here and I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Ms. Shanahan?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Shanahan at uh eight thirteen, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.